Hello everyone and welcome back once again. You're watching the PLZ Forum for Ecozoic Era 2020. We're broadcasting live from Seoul, Korea, and the time is a little bit after lunchtime, 1:00 PM. Following the special session from early on today, we have another special session. This one is organized by Center for Asian Urban Societies, also known by the abbreviation CAU. And I would like to introduce to you the moderator, Heeraun Shin, a professor at Seoul National University. We also have four presenters. Ji Yoo Su, distinguished professor of Department of Geography at National Taiwan University. We also have Takashi Yamazaki, professor of Department of Geography at Osaka City University, Japan. We also have Seung Lee, Assistant Professor of School of Humanities at Social Science at KIST, Korea Advanced Institute of Science and Technology. Last, we have Peogin Park, professor of Seoul National University and also the director of Center for Asian Urban Societies. Are you ready, Professor Shin? Are you there?
Yes, I'm ready.
We're all ready to hear you.
All right. Welcome to the Development, Environment, and Peace Nexus: Peacemaking in Borderlands. And this session is on the local and sub-national perspectives on sustainable and peaceful development in the East Asian borderlands. I am the moderator in this session. My name is Heeraun Shin. Well, this conference is organized by UNRISD and People for Earth with the support from Gangwon Provincial Government and Chulwon County Government of the Republic of Korea. Well, in this session, we would like to address peacemaking in the East Asian border regions based on the geopolitical economy perspectives. Well, today, I'm joined here by a fantastic group of panelists who will share some of their insights, reflections, and leave the experiences with us. After their initial round of presentations, well, each presentation will be probably around 15 minutes, and we will have some time for questions and answers. But before we start, let me make some brief announcements. This session will be recorded and then livestreamed via the YouTube channel, where it will remain available afterwards. You can also find the recordings of past sessions there in case you missed them. You will see that we have enabled the comments sections on the YouTube live channel. So please use the comments section for questions you'd like to pose directly to the speakers and put any general comments or information you'd like to share into the comments section. And for the questions and comments put into the comments section, you can use likes to indicate your support for the questions or comments. It will help us identify those questions and comments that most people would like to see addressed. And at the very end of the session, we will also share a link to a concise three-question feedback survey. So we would greatly appreciate if you could fill that in. All right. Now, let me go to the first presentation. The first speaker is Jin Yu Shu from National Taiwan University. And his title is Geopolitics and Development: The Border Work of Kiman and Machu Islands in the Cross-Trade Relation. Jin Yu, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Heeraun. And I take this chance to express my gratitude to the conference organizer to invite me to join this terrific conference. Okay. Here, my case study, I will present a case study about the Kiman and Machu. That's the offshore island. It's border region in the cross trade between Taiwan and mainland China. So here's the presentation online. In the beginning, I will talk about a very brief series of border work. And then I will go through the evolution of the Kiman and Machu islands in the cross-trade exchange in the past three decades. And then I will give a conclusion. Okay. So first of all, I will focus. My paper will talk about you use the concept of so-called border work. Basically, because recent researchers, they try to... Sorry. Okay. Recent researchers, they just tried to argue borders are no longer... Sorry. Okay. Okay, now, sorry. It's argued that borders are no longer used to clearly define the state territories. And at the same time, some researchers argue we need to take a position, so-called the border thinking. It's tried to argue the positionality of borders should not be subjected to let of the state. Because in the past, the state usually is taken as responsible for setting up the order of the core periphery. That's the order. That's the border. So instead of taking the borders the state-centric construction, the concept of border work is proposed by Christopher Rangford. He tried to argue the concept of border work should recognize the ability of older people, ordinary people, to construct borders without necessarily acknowledging the meanings delineated by the state. So, okay. And follow the concept. I tried to talk about the case study. Particularly, we'll focus on data development of the Kiman and Machu Islands. So the first part is from '49 to '58. It's about the birth of the islands. Because the uncertainty around the defeated KMT regime during the civil war against the communists in 1949. So at that time, the attitude of the US basically is, on the one hand, the US wanted waited for the communist response for the formal diplomatic relation. On the other hand, the US also supported the power competitor against Chiang Kai-shek in KMT. And also, at that time, the US also support so-called Taiwan Independence Movement. So, but because of the birth of Korean War, the seventh fleet of the US might not, you know, determine to jointly protect Taiwan from the invasion of the communist China. So some scholar called it the shipping of the existential state at that time. So here, you will see the map. Let's... The left side, that's the mainland China. That's the... It's PRC. And this side is Taiwan. The formal name is ROC Republic of China. And you will see these two small islands. That's the Machu Island, and this one is Kiman. You will see it's located closer to mainland than to Taiwan. But at that time, it was occupied by Taiwan, by Chiang Kai-shek's military. Okay. So at that time, military conflict in Kiman and the Gulin Toh battled to stop the communist sisterly victory in the civil war. So, and that time, including the Machu. Actually, the Machu is consisted of five separated administrative islands. And after the KMT retreated to Taiwan, the five separate small islands combined together. They become a new administrative unit. It's called Lianjiang County. So that means, in the past, the Machu is not... This is five separated small islands belongs to different counties. But after that, it's become a new identity. It's called Lianjiang County. So, and that time, the Machu Island become the frontline borderland from the fish village. And the Machu people are no longer allowed to go fishing, you know, after 1949. So the artillery war in '58 is the peak of the heart of war between Taiwan, between ROC and the PRC. Okay. And after '58, the island become... I tried to argue it's become a so-called militarized subject. At that time, so-called war zone administration was established in Kiman and Machu and abbreviated to Kimma, respectively, in '49 to command... In '54, to command and militarize the governance of popular sector. So at that time, we call it a compact village. The popular sector should to join the military training for a certain period. And even women was not exceptional. So, but at that time, Taiwan government, the ROC government, still increased the size of troops in the offshore Kimma and once reached 150,000 army, about one-quarter of the whole Taiwan military body. So at that time, the Kimma... These two islands, these two islands is rely on the compact economy very well. So you see, that's the... So, but at the same time, the right, so-called the right post-war of economic miracle in Taiwan after the '60s industrialization. Taiwan took advantage of so-called new international division of labor and to engage in industrialization. So, and at that time, the geo-economic, you know, Taiwan and as well as Korea was inserted into the geo-economic networks driven by the US firms. Okay. So, and now, I will talk about the... From '87, because Taiwan lifted martial law in '87. So it's changed. So it's called the democratization movement is occurred in Taiwan. And Taiwan now engages so-called in indigenization policy. That means we try to construct a sense of destiny, community, distinguished from the older Chinese identity. And at that time, then President Lee Deung-hui tried to propose a new Taiwanese identity, you know, in contrast to the older Chinese identity. So at that time, the army, the demilitarized, you know, occurred in Kimma. And the cut of army garrison started in the early '80s. Okay. So the number declined from the 150,000 in peak to less than 50,000 in early 2000s. And so the compact economy declined. And in response, the government opened the Kimma for so-called tourist industry in '93 to encourage people from Taiwan to visit Kiman-Machu. But, you know, the economy still very bad at the time. So, and because of, you know, the relationship between Taiwan and the PRC at that time, you know, and get smooth. And also, mainland China engaged in so-called economic reform. So now, the coast area between in mainland China and these two islands, they start to engage the so-called small amount commodities trade between Kimma and Fujian. And some of them are illegal according to the law. So, but after 2000, I tried to argue it's become a so-called developmental border work. It's because after 2000, the... At that time, the DPP won the presidential election in 2000. And it's determined to strengthen so-called Taiwan identity. Some people believe the so-called Taiwan identity is related to Taiwan independence movement. So, and but at that time, the government, the local government in Kimma, they tried to, you know, find their way, their own way. And they tried to... So the local government, they tried to sign agreement for cross-trade exchange. But most of the agreement was threatened to be punished by the DPP central government. So, and but in response, the government allowed the so-called three small links. And it's legalized the small amount commodity trade between Kimma and the PRC. And also, it... Okay. So it means the Kimma becomes spaces of exception to interface between Taiwan and the PRC. So, and the tourists from the PRC were allowed to visit Kimma only at that moment. Okay. And also, at that time, a number of experimental zone projects was proposed by the Kimma government. You can see, lot of... Also, lot of zones was opened in the coast area in mainland China. And the Kiman-Machu, they want to respond to this. And they propose, they propose like duty-free island. It's business tax waiver. And also, they tried to propose cross-trade free trader zone in these two small islands. They... But this proposal was reluctantly supported by the central government. And but it's enhanced the bargaining power of the Kiman-Machu local government. So, and actually, most of the proposal was, did not succeed. But only one is more, you know, achieved more successful result is the... Because it is a case of cross-trade submarine, submarine water supply pine line. You will see, sorry, that's in Chinese. There will be a pine line. It's 16 kilometers between, you know, submarine from mainland and to Kiman. Okay. Because Kiman had shortage of water. And they always want to import water, purchase water from the mainland China. Almost 20 years ago, they proposed to the central government, but were rejected. But finally, it was allowed to do that in 2015. So you will see the infrastructure was constructed. And, oh, and it's completed in 2018. But the government, the Che Young-won government, reluctant to accept it because it's against the so-called One China policy. So, but finally, the water comes from mainland and to Kiman, you know, because the local government insists and the local people support it. It's closely related to the everyday life of the local people in Kiman. So you find the water finally come out. So my conclusion is, I tried to argue the border work is very much the business of Kiman border agent such as the local government and ordinary people. So they involved in the constructing and contesting borders. And the Kiman border region is gained the momentum in the geopolitics of development in the process. Thank you. That's my presentation.
Thank you very much. It's very interesting. Well, the concept of the border, developmental border work he suggested is quite intriguing. Okay. Let's go to the second presentation by Takashi Yamazaki. His title is Inter-island Biodiversity Territoriality in East Asia from a Japanese Perspective. Takashi, please.
Okay. Let me share the... See. Can you see? Okay. Can you see?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, hello, everyone. Before starting my presentation, I would like to thank UN Research Institute of Social Development and Korean organizers very much for giving me this wonderful opportunity to participate in this session. It is quite an honor for me to be here today. So as shown in this title, my presentation is about inter-island biodiversity territoriality in East Asia illuminated from Japanese perspective. When we talk about borders, we assume a border space which we may call territory. One, our active making and using territory is called human territoriality. And human territoriality, according to SAC, can be defined as the attempt by an individual or group to affect, influence, or control people phenomena and relationship by delimiting and asserting control over a geographic area. Territoriality is complemented by borders as a way of communicating that there is territory under control. Territoriality also has an ideological effect to reproduce a particular value system or worldview within territory. So modern state territory has been closely connected to sovereignty as their exclusive governing rights and understood as a basis for an exercise of sovereignty. Although state territoriality has a European origin, it has become an international norm since the 17th century. So East Asia was incorporated into this interstate system through colonization by and de-colonization from Western powers in Japan. Like territoriality in general, state territoriality has an ideological effect called the territorial trap. According to Amiha Shali and Jiro, borderity indicates any technology of socio-spatial division or the governmentality of territorial limits. By analogy with the territoriality of any space, they argue that borderity concerns what makes a border within a given space from a functional and symbolic point of view. Given that territoriality is exercised through border control, borderity needs to be beyond a mere analogy of territoriality. The territorial and empirical interrelationship between borderity and territoriality should be explored. As Wilson and Donan indicate, the civilization of border studies is based mostly on experiences in Europe and North America. On the other hand, individual border case studies tend to lack civilization. Parcy argues that existing theoretical arguments need to be contextually deflected and reshaped instead of merely repeating them in different contexts. That's in an empirical and theoretical sense, a regional or supra-transnational perspective would be necessary to eliminate how borders work in East Asia. Unlike Europe and North America, maritime borders surrounding literal and archipelagic states in East Asia have played an essential role in shaping international relations and the people's daily lives. Such geographical settings need to be taken into account to understand East Asia's territorialities and borderities as Chen demonstrates. From this perspective, my presentation focuses on the two groups of islands, the Okinawa Islands and Ishigaki Islands here in the Liuqiu Island chain. As a geopolitical context that have affected the territorialities of state and regions in the East China Sea region, I can point out three interrelated contexts: the legacy survivor of the Cold War, continuing heavy US military presence on Okinawa Island, and so-called China's rise. Such geopolitical contexts have significantly affected the Japanese government's perspective on China's military buildup. The recent white paper of the Ministry of Defense of Japan describes the East China Sea with the phrases: "China's attempt to change the status quo in East China Sea" and "China's rapid expansion and increase of military activities." And expresses the Pacific Ocean with the phrase: "Active advancement to the Pacific Ocean by China." The territory of an archipelagic state is inherently porous and not contiguous. Does this physical environment determine its security risks and policies as an ontological given? None of such security risks has been centering on the territorial dispute over the Senkak, Diao Yu, Tiao Yu Tai islands, which has become worse since 2010. The dispute can be characterized as one over non-use islands for potentially useful sea areas designated as EEZs as illustrated in these overlapping or conflicting zones. However, such geopolitical territorial review cannot reveal the local realities. While the Liuqiu Island chain is marginal to mainland Japan, there are center-periphery relations within the chain. Okinawa Island has been urbanized and populated as the central island. And its islanders tend to vote against the US military presence as shown in light and dark green in this map. On the other hand, peripheral islands have been depopulated and politically economically marginalized. And their islanders have cast more conservative vote as shown in yellow and orange in the map due in part to the territorial dispute. These inter-island political economic disparities have led to the demilitarization of the peripheral islands' areas through the relocation of US bases and the construction of new Japan's self-defense forces bases. These are... These are a political choice made by their islanders for anticipated regional development at the expense of a possibility of being attacked by China. How can we shift? The territorial view mentioned above to create a new paradigm for peace, not conflict, in the region. I'd like to propose a new ontology and epistemology called inter-island biodiversity and territoriality. One of the main components of this perspective is multi-directionality. In the East China Sea region, there are neighboring others in multi-directions. Before the COVID-19 pandemic, this locational nature of islands had made the Okinawa and Sakishima Islands the crossroads of inbound cruising tourists from Taiwan and China and Japanese domestic tourists by air. The second component is geohistorical liminality. Border islands typically constitute a time-space of transition and often create a zone of colonial, post-colonial legacies of constant change. In this topology, islanders' identities are neither fully territorialized nor nationalized, which is what liminality means. The Liuqiu Island chain is not an exception. So the fact that state borders over the chain have been shifting since the early 17th century as shown with yellow dotted lines in this map. The third component is trans-locality. There are long-term trans-local relationships such as sister-city exchanges between islands in Okinawa and coastal cities in China and Taiwan. As interstate relations are tense in the region, it can negatively affect those relationships as seen recently between Ishigaki City in Okinawa and Suao Township in Taiwan, shown in yellow in the map. Suao, however, gave support to Ishigaki during the spread of COVID-19 in the island and still wishes to continue their sister-city exchange. So we do not have to assume that the state-level antagonism would supersede trans-local inter-island friendship. In conclusion, given the current standing of border studies, there are further contextualizations necessary to construct a regional paradigm for parts of the world other than Europe and North America. In East Asia, rather than an abstract notion of territory, an ontology and epistemology of archipelago and its relationship to mainland can help understand the geopolitical and the geo-economic dynamism of the region and hopefully create an alternative view to classical realist and state-centric geopolitics. I hope my presentation can give you some insight into the discussion of this session and the conference as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, he suggested a regional paradigm and they show the relationship between biodiversity and territoriality, talking about inter-island dynamics. Thank you so much. Okay, and he was very on time. All right, the third presenter is Sungook Lee from Korea Advanced Institute of Science and Technology. And then his title is Seeing Like a Border Towards An Agenda For Border Studies In The Korean Peninsula. Sungook, are you ready? Please.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. As introduced, I'm Sungook Lee from KIC. Thank you very much for inviting me to this conference. And it is my great pleasure and honor to speak along with the four, the other four Korean and international experts in East Asia. My organization has been working on activities on borderlines and borderlands. As you may well know, the borderlines between the two Koreas have been closed to the largest extent, and it is the most heavily militarized space. And it is the only, Korean Peninsula is the only place that has divided countries. As you can see on the left-hand side, the borderland is within the firing range of North Korea. So it is very important that we do the hard work to protect these areas. That is why also the army is stationed there, and it has very important meaning in terms of security. In recent years, due to geopolitical situations, as you can see at the bottom of the right-hand side, there is, there are more military bases located. The security and insecurity are the characters of these areas. These areas can be characterized by the level of security. And this is also the homeland for some politicians who argue for stronger security systems. And as you can see on the map, these areas are also full of military bases and military facilities as of 2018 in Kangwon and Gyeonggi provinces. More than 10% of their areas are military facilities. And these are defining the identities of the areas. And these areas can be also characterized by tank barriers. And these are the pictures of Paju City. And you can see the tank barriers scattered around Paju City. And there is a tank barrier that is as old as, that was made back in the Korean War. And as you were able to see on the pictures, there are areas that should be, should not be the subject of limitation of economic development. So in 2011, the government announced a special act on support for border areas. And the special act stipulates the purposes, which is the purpose of this act is to create new growth engines, support the improvement of the welfare of the residents, and contribute to strengthening national competitiveness and balanced national development. Specifically, which are the border areas? And the special act offers definitions. Basically, the term border area means she's and guns abiding the demilitarized zone established in accordance with the Military Armists Agreement. And it is, they are designated by the presidential decree based on the distance from the civilian line. As you can see, the light blue, light green areas, the yellow areas, they are the borderline areas. So practically, in reality, the borderlands and border areas have geopolitical and geo-economic characteristics, and they are not free from influence geopolitical and geo-economic influences. In the early 2000s, Korea has a new president, and that was the moment when the inter-Korean relationships have shifted dramatically. And this was the start and beginning of the shift in geopolitical and economic ups and downs. And in 2007, the second inter-Korean summit was held, and that pushed and accelerated the geopolitical and economic changes of the Korean Peninsula. For example, the two Koreas agreed to a project, joint project for Korean train crossing the two Koreas. But there was a threat as well. In 2008, a new government was launched, which was very conservative. And there was this tragic accident that one of the North Korean workers were killed in Kaesong Industrial Park. That led to the closure of the Korean industrial complex located in North Korea. And that has been followed by more developments of the two Koreas. And in 2018, there was a huge shift made across the borders. And many people expected they would bring another shift in geopolitical and economic situations as a result of the agreement on Panmunjom. There was movement to resume the inter-Korean roads and railways projects. From the geopolitical and economic perspective, as well as from other perspectives, there was a very meaningful incident. And in 2019, rejoining was proposed. So military conflicts should be stopped, and both Koreas agreed to that. And inter-Korean relations or cooperation used to focus on geopolitical situations, but since 2018, in 2018 and on wars, that shifted to geopolitical situations as well. So our view for the borderlands and border areas have been changed. And the borderland can serve as a hub for inter-Korean relations. In 2011, the special act was proposed and enacted, and the South Korean government announced a comprehensive development plan. Under the plan, the borderland will be made as an echo pit belt. Back then, the conservative government, Im Young-ba administration, proposed the special act. So as a result, it has inherent limitation. As you can see in this slide, the borderland is a place for inter-Korean economic cooperation, but at the same time, it is a frontline of military tension. And divisions have not been supported by the economic cooperation between the two Koreas. So borderlands between the two Koreas has been understood as a place for ecological value. So compared to the movement in 2010, the changes after 2018 have new meaning. For example, in 2019, the special act was revised. So by 2030, the government decided to invest 16 billion won to develop the areas. And SOC will be expanded, and the balanced development strategies will be implemented there. That was the part of provisions under the revised special act. So along with the plan, there was argument to ease and remove the protected areas. And there was the signs of new changes made to the borderlands. And these changes and shifts have been in consistency with the geopolitical changes, as you may well know, in the latest inter-Korean summits. The two Korean leaders made suggestions. And President Moon Jae-in suggested this new economic belt. Let's take a look at the picture on the left-hand side. It was 2018. And the right-hand side picture was proposed after 2018. The left picture only focuses on South Korea, but the right picture focuses on the overall Korean Peninsula. The vision itself covers the east, west, and south of the Korean Peninsula, and it stipulates separate visions for each area. And it not just focuses on the Korean Peninsula, but focuses on the Eurasia region. So it is a more greater vision. This regional vision is not something new. As you know, the former president Park Geun-hye suggested Eurasia vision, which is very similar to the vision I've just described. But these visions, I'm not sure whether resulted in tangible cooperation between the two countries. For example, President Moon Jae-in designated, proposed the plan to designate a special unification economic zones. And that will facilitate cooperation, economic cooperation between North Korea and small businesses in South Korea. This is not something new either. Special zones have been repeatedly proposed by both Koreas. If you look at the right-hand side, there has been a proposal to develop the borderland as a hub for economic activities. And a place in Paju is a good example. The Park Jung of the ruling Democratic Party of Korea said there is this potential for the border regions. I'm sorry that the article is written in Korean. So, but it's talking about the borderland is central to unification on the Korean Peninsula. So these stories show that there is this movement to reshuffle activities on the borderland. And Paju is getting ready for reunification. And Chorwon is another place that hopes for reunification. And these places and cities are branding themselves as a place for reunification on the Korean Peninsula. And residents in these cities are yearning for reunification as well. And there are still geopolitical visions left. And professor of Seoul National University, this professor made this column, this story. And he said, "DMG identifies the difference between the modern era and the medieval era, and borderland has this meaning and value." But this personally, I think, is an orientalistic view. And the former US president Trump, when he addressed the Korean National Assembly, he said, "DMG is the thin line of civilization that runs around the world." So in summary, various visions have been proposed for the borderland. The borderland has been viewed as a geopolitical frontline and marginalized periphery. And in recent years, borderline in Korea has been viewed as a wildlife sanctuary and nature preserve and as well as the frontline of civilization. But there are some things common here. They are reduced as an object of development plan, especially the central government's development plan or desire. And these approaches have been witnessed in the academic circle and community. This is an example. This is research of borderlands in Korea. If you look at the right-hand side, you can see, according to the graph, the number of researchers on borderlands in Korea is increasing. And social science is the major area that studies the borderland activities. And natural science is the second best. So in summary, most of the researchers take this approach focusing on local development, especially tourism. And we've seen changes in the political community and academic community. So new visions and new views have been introduced. And those new views have a meaning in that they are seeing the borderland as a place with new values like ecological preservation. So we have to go beyond the development-centered paradigm, and we have to start seeing the borderland in Korea as an important place from geopolitical and geo-economic perspective. So due to time constraint, I'm going to speed up. So by seeing like a border, what I meant was very similar to seeing like a city, which means recognizing that cities are living things made of entangled networks of bodies, symbols, technology, and infrastructure. So we have to take the same approach when we discuss the borderland on the Korean Peninsula. And borderland is changing fast. There is a good example in Korea. The borderland in Korea has experienced the housing price going up very rapidly. It is also a sign of another type of desire. It is also a sign of another type of desire. And due to the African swine fever outbreak, the borderland has been covered with blood. And this is an example of contaminated or polluted borderlands. So these are new types of borderlands image. So what I want to say, my point is, that the central government's visions and local governments' origins should be combined and integrated. And development, environment, and peace nexus can vary depending on where they happen and depending on the government's visions and plans. Lastly, this is my conclusion. So all in all, borders should not be treated only by the government, especially the central government's visions. There is a mixture of cultures and different societies and different ecology. I think I overran my presentation time.
So here I discussed the security, development, ecology nexus, and various aspects of border areas in the Korean peninsula. That was great. Okay, our last presenter is Park Beukyun Park from Seoul National University. And his title today is "The Role of Local Forces and Translocal Networks for the Development of Peaceful Geopolitical Economies in the East Asian Border Regions."
네 반갑습니다. 방금 소개받은 박배균입니다. 이번 세션에서 들어보셨겠지만 발표한 논문들이 똑같이 동아시아의 평화와 어떤 지속 가능한 발전을 추감해 있어서 지역도 로컬 행위자들의 역할과 중요성을 강조하는 그런 발표들이 많았는데요. 저도 그런 차원에서 그럼 저는 좀더 구체적이고 실천적인 차원에서 이 로컬 행위자들이 어떤 역할을
So let me tell you how we can play that role in more directly. So in terms of the peace building, we have this traditional approach, which is led by the central government, the relations between the central governments and nations, and how they see their territories and how they want to protect their territories in terms of the security. So at a larger scale than the nations, they also pay attention to the larger, like a multi-scales. However, as was mentioned before in this session, the presentations shared focus on the local rather than the nation or central government level. They focus on the local actors and their powers and their influences. And in terms of the context of the borderlands, why the local actors play an important role and what kind of roles that they can play will be what I'm going to highlight in my presentation. First off, in terms of the geological approach, will be the post-territorialization. Let me tell you how we should divide the borders and the territories. Borders or territories, a traditional approach shows that a border is a line dividing two countries. And based on the territories, they look at the borders. However, the post-territorialist approach shows that a border is not a closed concept. It has a high level of porosity. And also, in terms of the borders and territories, there are very multifaceted aspects. And there are many other non-government actors involved in this argument. And also, border has a network in nature. So in terms of the territorial sovereignty, we don't have this exclusive territory. But inside the border, there is porosity. So due to the porosity, there are many different spaces, and they are connected as a network. And they have many archipelago, which has like a high level of porosity. And on this sense, in terms of looking at the borders, rather than applying a linear theory or logic, we need to take a look at it from a nonlinear perspective. In this sense, how we should see a border? Let's find it in more detail. The borderline or national border has this mobility and territoriality. So it's at a crossroad. So the territoriality and also there is an overlapping area of this mobility. It also goes like transnational movement and the flow that takes place at the borderlands. So there are different forces, and there are the other forces that block this flow of movement. And that's happening at the borderlands. And the territorialization and de-territorialization, how they interplay, depending on their interplays, these borderlands can be a space of the conflicts and tension, or it can be a channel or venue for communication and exchanges. And I will skip the slides due to time constraints. This diagram is about the traditional approach of borders in terms of the post-territorialization. What you see on the left is a traditional approach. A border is very rigid, and inside and outside the border, it's clearly demarked. And what you see on the right, on the other hand, we have some lines, but there are some pores. It's a pores. And inside the border, there are many different actors inside and outside the border, and they interact on a continual basis. And they also keep creating other borders. So when you compare these two different diagrams, you can see the post-territorialization perspective. So given this, especially on the, I want to talk about the role of the local actors in East Asia. And as was mentioned by another speaker from Taiwan, Professor Fu Jin Yu mentioned in his presentation, it is the case of the Kinma Islands of Taiwan, and we have the West Sea Five Islands in South Korea. And I want to compare these two different countries or regions to tell you about the border work and the local actors' roles. And the Kinma Islands, as the professor who just mentioned, well, as you can see on the map, they are closer to the mainland China than Taiwan. Eight kilometers versus and 200 kilometers away from Taiwan. But they are a territory of Taiwan, and why this thing has happened? Well, the professor has already well-described in his presentation. But let's go through this history briefly. During the war, the People's Party was defeated, and they had to go through the Kinma Islands. And these Kinma Islands, in October 2049, the People's Party and the Communist Party had the battle. And the party, I mean, as a joke, by mistake, they won this battle. And the Communist Party could not make any further advancement, so they had to withdraw. And right after that, the Korean War broke out, and that has become just the borderline. However, before that, the Kinma Islands, the Fujian and the borderland were very closely related to this island, and they were sharing their region. And there was a large seaborne trade, and they served as a channel for this seaborne trade. And with the seaborne trade, they could have a lot of economic gains. However, as I mentioned, in 1949, we had this like event, and they has become a territory of Taiwan. And the Kinma Islands and between the Xiamen, they came to have this borderline. But before then, on the Kinma Islands, they depended on these islands, and they were separated, and they were marginalized, and they had to go through many economic difficulties. And not just economic difficulties, but during this time, a lot of military tensions and conflicts were concentrated on this region. Since the late 1950s and for like 20 years from China, they had these military tensions and conflicts were there, and these whole tensions were escalating over years. So they has become a military power took power in the country. But they started to see some changes. And since after 1979, they started to see some changes in terms of the demilitarization. And China and the US normalized their diplomatic ties. And after that, China, over the Kinma Island, they stopped this battle. And the military tensions between Taiwan and the mainland has went down. And across Taiwan, they had this democratic movement in 1987. And as a part of this democratic movement, they had this martial art lifted. However, Kinma Islands, although because they were on this frontline, the martial law was still there. And to fight against it, the local government or local people implemented a lot of this democratic movement. And in 1992, from this Kinma Island, the martial law was lifted, and they started to demilitarize. A few years later, they had another de-territorializing forces. So this is more, they have like three things. So in a small scale, between Taiwan and China, they may not be able to do that country-wise, but with some islands of like Maju and the Fujian Island. And in some regions, the mail delivery and the flow or movement of goods. And there is one more thing, I forgot that. But these three things were allowed to pass freely between these two regions. And there was a new measure. And that was started in 2001. And with the Kinma Islands, they have become to experience this de-territorialization. And one thing I want to highlight here in comparison to this case is the Five Islands in West Sea in Korea. They are very similar to the Kinma Islands. And they are far from the mainland of Korea and very close to North Korea. And in these islands, NNL and other maritime lines are effective. And around this NNL, there are severe conflicts. And since 1970s, North Korea denied this NNL, and they started to create a lot of or some different tensions. However, here, not just the territorial logic applied, but there are many different de-territorialization took place. Geohistorical, historically, they share the living space. So they had this force in play. And the other thing is, as an actor of the de-territorialization, we have this fishing resources, fishing stocks. It doesn't matter whether the territory or the border line is there, and they can move freely. And the fishers also were involved. I mean, they didn't intend to that, but they had these de-territorialization actions. And North Korea kidnapped some fishers in the 70s and 80s, and that was what was happening in the process of following or catching the fishers. And as a result, between North and South Korea, there were many discussions taking place on de-territorialization. It was to build like a mutual fishing zones, which started in 1982. And also, we had this special zone for West Sea Peace and Cooperation in 2007. President Woo Mui-hyun and North Korean leader Kim Jong-il had this discussion or negotiation. However, as you all know, after that, in 2008, we had this regime change or leadership change, and we had this North Korean nuclear crisis escalating. And all this discussion and efforts on de-territorialization has become fruitless. And we are still having this escalating military tension. I compare these two different cases, not just to tell you about the historical facts, but this Kinma Islands and Western Islands, how we can identify the differences between the two cases. These two regions, in identifying their differences, we need to take it from like a macro level, geopolitical and geo-economic level. They have some differences. For the Kinma Islands, for example, after the opening of China, the diplomatic ties between the US and China was normalized, and that had a huge impact. And the Chinese economy has grown a lot. So with the surrounding conditions changing, that led to changes in this region as well. However, for these West Sea Five Islands in Korea, we are having this national division. And there is some remnants and conflicts coming from this Cold War. That's what we have. So the, so de-territorialization hasn't really had impact. But that's not all. As I mentioned before, at a macro level, there are other geopolitical factors. And many people have mentioned on this, so I will not cover that. But I want to highlight here, there are some differences in terms of the local conditions. For the Kinma Island, they had more than 100,000 in population. So they have a large population. But for the West Sea Five Islands, all combined, they have a population of less than 15,000. So population is a big difference. And also, for the Kinma Islands, it has a bigger population, and they have a strong economic base, and they have very famous for their liquor product. So they are really prospering in terms of the economy. So the central government, they are less dependent on the central government. And the other thing is, these Kinma Islands, unlike this mainland or Taiwan, they didn't have this colonial experience by Japan. So they have different identities from the mainland. So as I mentioned before, in the late 80s, they resisted against the militarization. And also, they had this democratic movement, which explains why they worked on this. And as Professor Fu mentioned, the Kinma Islands and China had many smuggling between these two countries, and it was hard for them to punish all these smuggling trades. And these three passage policies was triggered by that change. However, for these West Sea Five Islands, they have smaller population, and they have a very weak base for the economic development. So from the central government, they had to get a lot of support. So at a local level, their autonomy or the voices of their local residents were not really heard. And these are the differences. Well, the West Sea Five Islands, I've been there many times. When you go there, the residents don't want people to look at them as a place for military tensions. They don't want to hear about it because that blocks the flow of the tourists. So in other words, the borderlands and the local residents, how they see themselves is really different from how we see them at a national level. So these identities, marginalized identities and marginalized perspectives are what we need to think more carefully. Why my slides are not really moving? Okay, so it's working now. So given this, in promoting peace in East Asia, how we can promote the local initiatives? This is the borderlands and the cities and the region connected. We have many such cities in Korea. We have inter-Korean borderlands in Cheju, Okinawa in Japan, and Chin Kinma and Maju in Taiwan. So these borderland cities, as I mentioned before, they have a very unique characteristics, the territoriality and mobility, there is an overlay space. And they have this violence and the memories of the ideological conflict from the Cold War. So they have very unique nature, and they have to leverage these unique stories and their sorrows and the pains from their memories. And they can build And they can build a network. So this is what I want to propose, which is to build an East Asian peace city network. And by linking this into local and the urban cities, we can have a network for peace city. And in this peace city, we can have many discussion and linking all the cities and towns and counties led by the local actors, experts, scholars, local NGO activists and the local government officials, politicians, businessmen and residents will be the leading actors of this network. And also, inside the network, you will be an epistemic community. That's a vision for this network. And the key here, because the local actors don't have these diplomatic powers, so they will not be able to make any convention or treaty or signing to these treaties. However, they can play an important role, and which will be to build epistemic community for mutual learning and knowledge sharing and having common framework for the issues. And also, they can propose very specific solutions to build peace. That's the role that they can play in the region. And these actors, what they will learn and share? Well, at a local level, they can promote this de-territorial argument and discussion. And they don't need to really deal with actual security or safety issues. It's about the towns and communities. They can have like a more inclusive and eco-friendly place. And that will be a foundation for building permanent peace in the region. So at a city level and a local level, they can learn from each other. And by doing that, we can have sustainable peace and come up with the local solutions for experiments. And then, led by these local actors, we can share their perspectives. And based on this, we can promote them into national projects and national achievements. They can play an important role. So to conclude, people often say that the peacemaking in the Korean Peninsula and East Asia, the multilateral approach is important, like the Six Party Talk. We need to come back to the table. Many people say that, and I understand that it's important as well. But this multilateral diplomacy needs to be expanded and also deepened. At a national level, they will have limitations. They may miss some elements that they cannot see at the national level. So at a local level as well, we need to work and work with and involve these local actors so that we can have more deeper and more dynamic changes and achievements of peace. And by doing this, we can open up a new window for the diplomat, the urban diplomacy. And on this multifaceted and multilateral diplomatic framework and governance, we can have a peace on the Korean Peninsula. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. So Peekun said that the border is porous and messy. And he suggested that the East Asian peace city networks, those are local initiatives that can make the border more porous and messier in a positive ways. Okay, now, we are going into the questions and answers. And I believe that we have a wonderful questions already. And we have about 30 minutes, okay? So let's go to the first question first. This is, okay, let me read the question. What are the main reasons preventing sustainable and peaceful development in the East Asian borderlands? Well, I think that Takashi, probably you can answer. But let me read another question for you. Professor, I wonder if we can bring out trans-locality in our sister cities? I don't know about Japan, but in Korea, sister cities tend to be an administrative event. The concept of a trans-locality is very interesting. So Takashi, probably you can talk about trans-locality. And then, this, you know, the main reasons preventing sustainable and peaceful development in East Asia?
Okay, thank you very much for wonderful questions. Okay, I'll try to answer the first one first. I think there are a couple of reasons for that. The biggest one is, you know, as you probably know, the legacy and the survival of the Cold War, geopolitical reason. The kind of great power rivalry now is shifting from US-Russia rivalry to US-China one, right? And as well as, we also have North Korean issue and, you know, Taiwan problem, things like that. These kind of things, political, geopolitical conditions hinder a better peaceful relationship did by parting countries. The second one is, I think that that second one can be solved through the effort of parting countries. The second one is post-colonial matters between countries, right? And this matter can easily be used politically by politicians in each country. If they stop doing that, I think we can solve this problem. We can, we can reach mutual understanding about to the past. And the third one is actually closely related to the first two, lack of mutual trust. And we need trust building among us, right? These are geopolitical reasons, I think, working for this kind of prevention of peace building. And the second dimension is geo-economics, right? And East Asia is the price of the highest, you know, economic growth, one of the highest economic growth area in the world. And also, we have highly competitive economies and we compete each other, right? And at the same time, we are very much, you know, closely connected with each other. So our economy is, cannot be separated, you know, by country, it's a state, right? We, our economy, East Asian economy is closely, you know, connected to each other, right? So this, you know, is, can be a possibility to build a better, you know, peace and relationship among our, you know, countries. And, but this, you know, kind of geo-economic interrelations create environmental problems, right? To be solved through mutual, you know, cooperation. Now, this is a big issue, environmental issue, global warming and the air pollution and ocean pollution, things like that. So we really need multilateral regime to, to, to address this, this issue. So our, our set may be one, you know, such device to, for the coordination of environmental or economic or political issues, right? And so that's why I think regional paradigms is now necessary to, to, to pay more attention to these, you know, transnational issues. That, that's the question from, from me for the first, first question, okay? So, so, I know, other panelists may add something to it. So I can wait for, moving to the second question.
Sorry, I was going to ask Sunguk the first question as well.
Okay.
But you have another question, no, other two questions, actually. Did you see this? Okay, it's a long question. And then there is, is another one. So maybe you can...
Should I ask the second question now or should I wait?
Right. I think Takashi, you can, you can answer the second question first and then I go to Sunguk.
Okay, okay. So regarding the second question, this is also a very good question. Well, if you look at the Dukyo Island chain, and this is part of Japan, right? So I don't know how compare this case with the other case in Korean Peninsula, for example. That, that's what I want to say. You know, we really have to contextualize, you know, the inter-island or within peninsula relationship and things like that. So we, we have to contextualize, you know, this, this type of issue. Regarding Japan, I think municipality, local government may have some jurisdiction to promote inter-municipal diplomacy with Taiwan and China. As long as this may not sort of prevent the central government intention and to promote the national diplomacy, right? So if the local government has discretion, that, I mean, you know, the government, local government system is decentralized enough to promote local diplomacy, it is possible to create a better social economic relations with the other side of the border, in the case of Japan, okay? And also, we have to look at the border as an entity of multi-dimensional. You know, multi-dimensional is very important. And also, in the case of Archipelago, the distance means, the political distance to mainland is also affecting the possibility of trans-local diplomacy. So for the islanders, actually, it's more beneficial to build transport relationships with the other side of the border, Taiwan and the coast of China, rather than to mainland. So in that case, as far as the political environment allows, it's, it's better to promote translocal diplomacy with the other side of the border. Okay.
Thank you. Peekun, would you like to add?
Yes.
I was speaking Korean. So Professor Takashi, thank you for the comment. And I want to add a few more comments to your answer. Yes, of course, at the current stage, these international and diplomatic works at the local governments are not really substantial. They exchange as a sister cities, but they are more of a family. They send the people and they do some exchange and study tour. They do some of the work, but they are not really substantial in bringing any tangible progress. And as Takashi just mentioned, these diplomatic ties or diplomatic power held by local governments are not enough. That's a good point. So we have to decentralize the local governments so that we can give more power to the local governments, and that is true. But there's one thing. But still, as I mentioned and presented on my peace city network, we have to build it as an epistemic network or community. Because even though they don't have a strong power at local governments, if they have a strong and closely knit epistemic community that can work, let go cities on the borderlands or the cities who want to be a part of the network, they can build this community. And they can share their experiences and they can share their knowledge. And by doing that, they can further make their cities more inclusive and more multifaceted and economically eco-friendly by sharing and learning from each other. And they can have like a common framework of solving issues. And this, in this journey, they need to have, and that will mean a lot as much as this diplomatic power given to local governments. So building this epistemic community at local governments may not lead to immediate decentralization or giving the diplomatic power to local governments. But even without doing that, we can build this local community if our local actors have strong creativity and strong vision.
I think the audiences are also thinking about the roles of a local government, local governance and the national government. Because a similar question comes to Sunguk Lee, for example, to think still the national level politics is still main factor, yeah? And another question is about what the border cooperation initiative still focuses on connection with the continent. And then, he said that I personally think that it will be possible to create an agenda of promoting peace starting from joint responses to China's fishing boat economic advancement. And then also, to Sunguk Lee, what this question is about the residents, the local residents' lives in the, in the border area. So would you like to respond?
First of all, I'd like to answer the question first, which was asked by Lee Kyung-won. As Professor Park mentioned earlier, in 2007, the Western Sea Cooperation Zone, the idea was first introduced and it was going beyond the territorial boundary. So it was a very meaningful attempt, but it was weakened by political power. So it was very unfortunate to see that. But when such an attempt was collapsing due to the political intervention, but as other speakers or experts would say, that we need to give more focus and attention to the bottom-up trials. In 2007, the idea of Western Sea Cooperation Zone should be, we should shed a new light on the idea of Western Sea Cooperation Zone. I'm not saying national politics is the only thing that is important. I think everyone else would agree that at different scale, power moves. For example, in the borderlands in East Asia, the legacy of Cold War still remains, they are still powerful. And there are these structural problems in East Asia. Borderlands, such a structural power has a strong influence on the borderlands structure in East Asia. But if we focus on the two Koreas and the Korean Peninsula, everything comes second to national security. So desire and views and understanding and interest of the central government has override everything else. And in the process, the emotions and psychology of people have been ignored and overlooked. So we need to shed new light on those new views. And different people are living in different borderlands with a different lifestyles and different perspectives. So I'd like to suggest we have a more closer look at the different views. As the professor said earlier, we are not, we shouldn't try to change the view of these people, but we should at least open up our mind and share their views, try to understand them. We should move away from the central view and we should look at the edges more. So as a geologist, I think we can learn more by meeting with people and talking with them and learning about their lifestyles and daily routines. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. And then, one of the pre-received questions can go to probably Jin Yoo-su and then Peekun Park, because this is about local governance. How can the issue of a peacemaking in border areas have a relationship with the, with the local governance? Would you like to respond, Jin Yoo?
Okay, I can give a quick response. I think border is always is the site of combination about state building, about sovereignty, okay? But if we, you know, just confined in this idea, I think no, the border will cannot play any role. And the, and the local government in the border region cannot play any role. And the local government in the border region cannot play any role, no, in the cross-border exchange. But if we change the view, the border can be interface. It can be, if we borrow the idea of sovereignty, so we can share some sovereignty in the border region. And then, we will have some exchange. I think from the experience in Taiwan, in Kiman Ma-ju, I think as a, we, in spite of ups and downs in the cross-trade exchange, but I think in the long term, the local government still has their voice, particularly those issue closely related to the everyday life in the local, you know, in the border region. So, I am optimistic about the law of the local government played in the cross-border exchange.
Right, let me ask the same question to Park Yun. And especially then, what do you think about the roles of a civil society? Or universities? And how about the national government when the cities establish this network?
Well, yes, indeed, at the borderlands, the actors, local actors, their roles need to be further highlighted and we need to listen closely to their voices, that's important. However, at the same time, on the local, in the local actors, their voices may not always be good or well-intended. On the Korean Peninsula, when you look at the borderlands, in many cases, the local actors, their voices are mostly for development. Please scrap the regulations, we want to build infrastructure, buildings, industrial development. They have these desires for development in their voices. So, in some sense, what we are talking about here, the peace and the sustainability, the sustainability part may not be well captured if we just listen to their voices only. So, we need to involve more diverse local actors. However, when you look at borderlands on the Korean Peninsula, local actors' voices are mostly from these development pursuers or the pro-development people. And their local voices are bigger than the others. But we should listen to different stakeholders and different local actors with different perspectives because as a way to promote the democracy at the local level. And I think on the borderlands, in promoting the local governance, this will be a key precondition.
Right, there can be various, various actors. And then, I would like to repeat my question about the national government. Because I really like your idea about the city, peace city networks. So, when cities do that, East Asian cities do like a peace networks, what would be a potential role of national government? Do they watch and support?
Yeah.
Right, the center government, national government, their role, historically, whether it's developed countries or in East Asia or West European, like a welfare government, either of the cases, these governments were regulatory states in nature. But I think the regulatory states should change into enabling states. Because the enabling states, by that I mean, the civil groups or civil society or the local initiatives need to be identified, captured and supported by the center national government. That's the role that they have to play. That's the shift that they need to make as an enabling government or state from the regulatory state to an enabling state. This whole transition will not just about the governance in the borderlands, but it covers, I mean, with the COVID-19 and the public services and the public goods are now being an important part of life. And people are now talking about the role of the welfare state from the regulatory state to an enabling state. So, in this regard, I think in terms of the borderland governance, local actors' voices need to be heard and the center national government need to support and advocate the local initiatives. That's the role of the national government, I think.
So, listening to you, I'm getting really optimistic about this, you know, sustainable and peaceful development. But let me ask this last question. So, would you think of any disabling factors? Like the first question, what is the main reasons preventing peaceful development? So, what would be a main reasons preventing East Asia peace city networks development? Anybody? Because...
Maybe going back to the, as you know, others pointed out, maybe they're going back to the sort of the mentality of, you know, territorialization, right? And the classical geopolitical thought. You know, the state has territory, territory has to be protected, but that doesn't work well. If you look at the periphery or you consider the borderlands, you know, in order for borderlands to develop, you know, we have to, you know, getting a little bit more and more away from this type of mentality of, you know, territorialization. That's one way for the future.
So, we should move on.
We tend to go back to the past too much sometimes. And the, you know, national media promote this type of, you know, perception of border dispute, right?
Right, right.
Affect the borderlands, even though they had the chance to create, you know, local transborder, you know, development with the other side of the border. But they try to shut down, you know, the territory or land kind of thing. So, it's partially important, you know, to protect yourself. But at the same time, you have to open yourself to, you know, to build relationship to the other side. So, we are completely, you know, trapped, sometimes trapped in this territorial trap.
We should move on from this classical geopolitical trap.
Different vision of the world.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Then what can, because it was one of the pre-received questions, the role of ordinary people. Park Yun?
Yeah.
Yes, as Professor Takashi just mentioned, in international relations and peace-building works, we have to move away from these traditional approaches, centering on the states and the state, their own logics and the nations or nationalities and the trap of territory. Not just the originally public, but the policymakers and also key leaders of political circle are now having this mindset and attitude as an underlying mindset. So, at a local level, the local initiatives or peace city network establishment is now being hampered by this mindset. So, nationalistic or state-oriented perspective and the territory trap are what we need to overcome by making different efforts on many different fronts. Well, I think to overcome territorial trap, of course, we can say that, but actions even matter more because specific actions and by turning that into something that's tangible so that people can see that there is a trap and we are trapped. And, well, we have to address this territory trap. And among the political geographic researchers, we know that for sure. However, rather than just repeating it, I think although we are not fully ready, I am proposing the idea of the peace city network as I hope that we want to have something tangible with a target and vision of this network so that we can overcome and move beyond the territory trap and move on for the next step. So, that was why I did that.
So much. I really believe that we had the best geopolitics scholars in this session. And then, thank you so much for your presentations and the questions from the audiences. I think that this session really provided local, you know, sub-national perspectives from the geopolitical, geo-economic perspectives. I think this debate can go on for more hours, but because of the time limit, I think we have to finalize here. Thank you, everyone, so much for your participation and contribution.
Thank you, Takashi and Jin Yoo.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, see you soon.
See you soon again.
So much, professors.
Everyone, that was the special session two organized by the Center for Asian Urban Societies. In particular, I would like to thank Professor Hae-ran Shin for moderating and all the other four presenters for their valuable participation. Moving on, we have session seven. That will be the closing session for the closing of the forum. It will be in a roundtable format and we'll take a little bit of a break before then. The closing session will start at three o'clock Korea Standard Time, less than in half an hour from now. So, why don't we take a little break and come back and see you again at three o'clock? Thank you very much.